Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of April 21st, 2020. As our first order of business, I would like to resolve to convene an executive session for the purposes of one manner that may lead to the appointment of one particular person.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening again and welcome back to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of April 21st, 2020. Please join me as we salute our flag to reconvene our meeting. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
And to the Republic of the Republic.
With its hands.
One nation.
Under God.
In this call.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to
That was interesting.
That was not our finest
I think it's just the, I don't think there's anything we can do about the different sounds.
It's like a delay.
There is a delay. So I'd like to say good evening for anybody who was live streaming or watching from home. Hope you were all staying well, as well as possible, and managing in what has become, I don't like the phrase, but the one we've been using, our new normal. And I would like to begin, I'm sorry, I have to do two things at once. I'd like to begin with the resolution to approve the minutes for the work session/business meeting of April 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're going right into our first presentation, which is the Putnam Northern Westchester BOC's vote. So Dr. Luft, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So I know this is the annual vote for the Putnam Northern Westchester BOC's budget. I don't have the dollar amounts in front of me, but obviously, we enter into many shared services with PNW BOCs over the past few years and actually get a very good aid ratio back for our terms. Thanks. So
The budget amount is $9,637,111, of which Putnam Valley's share is 2.54%, or $244,426.
Right, that's the administrative budget.
Right, and that's a decrease of $1,000 from last year.
Well said.
And we are also, we are voting for the three board positions, they're, I believe they're incumbents.
No, just, no, two of them are.
Okay.
Three positions and three positions, three people, correct.
Yes. Two of them are presently serving on the board and Rosen is taking over the position of Anita Feldman, who resigned.
Okay, from Borrecker. Okay. So we will be voting in a resolution later this evening, correct?
To accept the budget, yeah.
So let me, I want to ask Jill, this budget is no different than it was a week ago, a month ago. This is their budget, there's no adjustment at all in this based on current events, right?
Right, they have not made any adjustments to that budget. We don't know what will happen, they could still make an adjustment. You know, we'll have to see what happens in the next month.
And also for people watching, the reason our board meeting is today on a Tuesday, it's because all 18 districts have to meet today to vote on this on the same day. Speaking of budgets, is there anything else on BOCs? So we will move to our proposed budget update by Dr. Luft and Jill Figueroa.
So as many are aware, there's been a lot of changes going on at the state level in terms of state aid, and we continue to adjust our budget accordingly. So I'm going to let Jill start off at the first couple of slides to talk about the adjustments that we've made to get to the point where we are, and then I'll talk a little bit about the decisions we made and the priorities we set to offset those deficits.
Right, so, so we're not really going to go over the budget itself, but more or less, you know, the idea of having to change the budget. So we've had many statewide, you know, implications due to the COVID virus, and for now, school buildings are going to be closed until May 15th, so we know right now. We know that the annual budget vote will be moved to June and that they have not established a new date. And we also know that New York State enacted their state budget, so the day, I believe it was the day after our last meeting, when we weren't sure what they were going to do, they decided to enact the budget. And it's, it's cut back from its original budget that we suspected it would be, that they presented in January. And the governor has also announced, and I believe yesterday he announced, that it could, it's going to be reevaluated at some point if the state does not see the federal influx, you know, the influx of federal help that they're expecting, so that their revenues are where they need them to be to ensure that the district can, you know, the school districts can get their aid. He's talking about cutting possibly another 20%. So nothing in stone, but certainly a threat to us. So right now, for our 2021 budget, we're expecting a revenue shortfall of $568,000, and that's based on the cuts in aid and what we expect to lose as far as revenue goes. So we have our foundation aid reduced back to what it was in 2019, 20. We have our, BOC's aid was reduced somewhat, but we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we go through the slides. Our building aid, actually, we received a little more because we had some deferred aid coming to us, so that helped, that's going to help us. Not much, but it's a help in what we're going to get for next year. And then our interest in earnings, we're going to lose some money on our investments, not only in the spring this year, but probably the interest rates, you know, they're going to bounce back eventually, but we don't know when, so we're going to lose some interest going forward in the new year, and we'll probably be realizing some late tax payments because of it, I'm anticipating that as part of the problem, so we'll see. That's my expectation. So here is where we strategized about being able to balance the budget and how we would do that. I don't know, Jeremy, do you want to talk about this part, or do you want me to keep going?
Sure, I'll take this. So when Jill and I met to realize that number, we sort of brainstormed different areas in which we can look to try to offset that amount of money. So these are the four categories that we came up with. So the first one is, we went back to our budget as was originally sort of proposed back in January and February. We were ready to sort of adopt that budget before this all happened. So we went back and took another look at that budget to see if there were opportunities for reductions off of what was sort of that base budget. So that was the first priority, that was something that we tried to reduce as much as possible before examining the others. So our next one was, we looked at opportunities to maximize our state aid. So if, because this is still this fiscal year, purchases we make this year, we would realize aid back the following year, which we could use to help offset that, and you'll see in a upcoming slide, by doing number two, we actually also were able to reduce the existing budget in number one, and I'll cover that in a second. The third one is, we have a very unique situation where although we still continue to pay our employees, we're certainly realizing some savings during the closure period. Now, this is a one-time, or we hope it's a one-time closure period, a one-time opportunity to save money, and we want to make sure that that money we're able to save because of the closure, we can transfer into reserves and then use those reserves to help offset what that deficit would be, to help offset the $568,000. And then the last bucket that we were looking at is, we met with our administrative team and we discussed the potential for reducing staffing and programs, and as we currently stand with the number, the $568,000, we think we can balance our budget without necessarily having to dip into number four, at least not deeply at this point, but as has been in the news and people are aware, that our, what, the number to $568,000 is very likely to change again. Our first sort of check-in period with the state is on April 30th, and we anticipate, or this is possibility, that funding for schools would be further reduced at that point, and then at two other checkpoints throughout the school year as well. So we have to make sure that we prepare ourselves for those possibilities as well. So these are the four categories we looked at in prioritized order. Just to go into a little bit further into number one, the first piece was, we removed our installment purchase agreement, so that's the agreement we have with BOCs to purchase, to finance our technology purchases over a number of years, and instead of entering that purchase agreement, we decided to use some of the savings from this school year to buy that equipment outright. What that allows us to do is, by buying the equipment outright, we would incur the state aid back all next year, rather than spacing out, spreading out that state aid over the course of five years, we would realize that aid all in a single year, which would help us, our aid ratio is almost 70%, so we realize a lot of that spending back, so we would save money on the aid side, but we also reduce our budget line in this year because we're no longer financing it. And the other one was, we had an additional .6 teaching position built into our budget. We kept there to meet the needs of our middle school schedule, if the need arose, and we were able to address the middle school scheduling issues without the need to hire new staff. So that's a new development, and we were able to reduce that from the budget at this point in time. So as I mentioned, for the first piece, by replacing the installment purchase agreement with a direct purchase of equipment through BOCs, not direct purchase, by purchasing all the equipment at once through BOCs, we receive, we would receive approximately $180,000 back in BOC's aid, and that amount of money could be used to help make up for that $568,000 gap we're trying to fill. So the last one is our anticipated savings during the closure period, and this is obviously the most fluid of the options. This is still happening in real time, and as of right now, we're only closed to May 15th, so if the closure period were to end May 15th, a lot of these numbers would drastically change. So, but this is just sort of sends a summary of some of the items, or some of the ways we hope to incur savings, and actually, it also acknowledges some of the revenues we're losing in terms of the revenue we receive from renting the PAC and interest and earnings, about $100,000. But payroll expenses, that's primarily overtime and other things that we don't have to contractually pay, and transportation and gasoline for athletic runs and the fuel costs, another $60,000. So this, this number will, will vary drastically as we reach the end of the year. This, we think, is a very conservative number, we didn't want to overshoot it and not reach it, so there is a possibility, and this could be better, but there's also a possibility you could return to school in this number, but it would no longer be accurate. So if we add up the anticipated savings from those first three priorities, we have about $118,000 of savings from the budget, $180,000 in state aid, additional revenue, and then $280,000 which would come in as revenue based upon our savings during the closure period, would give us about $10,000 more than we would actually need at this point in time, just with the question that on April 30th, we anticipate in all likelihood these numbers will change again, and then we'll have to dig a little deeper. One of the fears that we have, and one of the real reasons why we don't want to, to go too far into that fourth category, obviously, we want to do everything we can to preserve staffing and programs, but the reality is, even if there's no further cuts, and we're able to get into this budget with the cuts that I have on here now, next school year, we're already starting $600,000 in the hole, at the very least. So it'll take us many years to get out of the hole that we're in now, because they're not, there's no expectation that this state's going to double the amount of state aid we get back next year. So moving forward, we're always going to be $600,000 less than we would have otherwise been, which we all know compounds over time. You want to cover the last slide, Joe?
Sure, so, well, this is the last slide here, and we're gonna, you know, we don't know if there's more state aid, state aid cuts coming. This, this is the one, you, did you just, you just went over this, no? And when will the school reopen? We don't know. If that doesn't happen, you know, this year, then, you know, we, we know that we'll be able to save what we just talked about. I think the idea of rolling over the savings from the closure period to help close the gap is the, is the important piece, because if we do save what we think we're going to, then we'll be able to put that into what we're using for fund balance and know that we're not using any more additional money from our fund balance, but actually from what we saved during this closure period. And, you know, looking forward, I think we all just need to keep in mind that we can't just think about this year and next year, that the major concern is the, is the following, the years to come, and '21, '22 is where we could see a big fluctuation in the pension costs, as we mentioned last meeting, coming out of this, coming out of the market dropping, and, you know, it's going to cause a big expense to us down the road that we're not seeing right now. And a lot of those things are going to start coming up, all those unintended consequences of this type of event. So, you know, we just need to keep close eye on it and not make any promises at this point. I think the end of April is going to obviously get us a step closer to what we, what we will know about the budget for next year, but it's certainly not going to be the, you know, the, the solution or the final number that we're going to be able to use to make decisions. I think we're going to keep on having to change those decisions as we go, and everyone's going to have to keep an open mind about that. Even if we do get to vote on the budget, I think people need to keep in mind that there's going to be some considerations going forward, you know, three months, six months, nine months, until, you know, we have a better idea of when this, the virus is, is under control, or if it's not, you know, to possibly have a more school closings down the road, you know, so.
Jill, can you, can you talk more about these checkpoints and what they're really about and what they're designed, or Dr. Luft, either one? Just kind of educating on what those checkpoints really are from the state's point of view.
I think they, they represent a point, they represent a conversation that the governor is telling us that we need to keep in mind, that he's not going to promise that what he's enacted as a budget is what's going to stick, and that if he doesn't get the federal help that he needs to close his gap in the state budget, that he can't make any promises to the school districts to keep those numbers solid. And that is what those checkpoints are about, in my mind. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Jeremy?
Yeah, I mean, the reality of the situation is, the, the state's projecting to be $15 billion in the hole based upon the coronavirus outbreak. So they, the cuts they've made to education, I think equates so far to about $2 billion of, of cuts, which essentially was what they got from the federal government from the $2.2 trillion stimulus package that was passed. So that leaves them still at least $13 billion in the hole. So they're obviously advocating for the federal government to give the states money to offset those expenses, and what they're saying is, absent that, they still have to make up that $13 billion somehow, some way, and I think school aid takes up 26% of the entire state budget. So what he's saying is, it's physically impossible for him to make up $13 billion without further impacting school budgets. So at the end of August is that first check-in period, if it's more than one, if revenues are 99% of projection or less, then there'll be a downward projection for state aid, and if it's 101% or more, based upon their projections, if revenue comes in above projections, then there's a possibility that, that there could be additional aid.
What are the dates of those checkpoints? You said April, April 30th of this year is, is what's coming up, but what's, what are the checkpoints after that? Is it quarterly?
It's April 30th.
I think he said June, yeah.
I want to say it's April, June, and January, but I'll confirm those.
Right.
So in theory, it all, of all these, two of them are post-budget vote, so we've had to make adjustments in the year that we're actually working in.
Yes. Yeah, he hasn't spoken about, I know last meeting I mentioned, you know, who knows if he'll cut our last payment this year, but he hasn't said anything about doing that. I would hope that that, if that was his intention, that he would make that public information now, but nothing was spoke about for the current year.
And then a following question, if we're talking about accelerating our purchasing to maximize our aid in the short term, is there any chance that the aid formula would change that would jeopardize that number for us? Do we think that's likely or very unlikely?
So in the current budget, it has not, they've made assurances that those aid ratios, there was some talk about consolidating all expense-based aid into a single metric. That is, that was not part of the adopted budget, but I guess in the situation we're in, sort of anything is possible. But right now, all the aid ratios and the separation of expense-based aids remain in the budget for this year, for next year.
Yeah, and I think we have to think about, you know, those aid ratios could get reworked next year, for sure, and again, they'd probably be on the table to try and do something again with those aid, you know, those expense-based aids, so I think it's, I think it's a, it's a smart decision to try and maximize that now, instead of waiting to see what's going to happen with them next year. You know, we, we can still, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to say, I mean, it's all about, it's all about making, you know, predictions about what's, what's going to happen when you don't have a lot of guidance, so.
And just for those in the audience, the major problem with the state is the revenue that comes from sales tax.
So, sales tax, it's interesting that you bring that up, I, I thought about it in the beginning. We're not really affected by the sales tax directly.
No, we're not directly, it's indirectly that we get affected.
You're saying the state budget
Well, the sales tax, yeah, I mean, the sales tax, we adjust our tax warrant for the Westchester County portion of sales tax that we get. So we actually, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us in the long run. It, we get to adjust the tax warrant in the town of Portland for the Westchester portion of sales tax that we, that we get. So if we don't get enough, if we don't get as much as we usually get, it gets adjusted up or down.
Yeah.
So we don't feel it that way, but
No, we don't feel it directly, but it's their revenue that, you know, it's a major source of revenue in general for them, not just that small amount.
For the whole state, for everybody's income tax, yes.
Yep.
Now, we don't have a specific date yet that we need a budget, or we need to vote on this budget, correct?
No, the state has not yet committed to a date for the vote.
And we're assuming that it will be, we're assuming it will be before the first state checkpoint, correct?
No, and it definitely won't be.
It won't be.
The first checkpoint is April 30th.
Okay, you mentioned June, so I wasn't sure, okay.
Okay, so we've been, there's been, we've been, recommendations have come from state organizations to not necessarily adopt your budget until after that first check-in period, because it could substantially change everything.
Currently, we need to adopt one month prior, that, the current rules are, or say, the pre-current rules are, one month prior to the vote day would be when we need to adopt at the latest, correct?
Correct.
Well, yeah, and the rules can change, and they can lift those, you know, they haven't said that they were going to stick to that, that we were going to have to stick to that, they're not broadcasting any new calendars, because they would have to be putting the calendars out for us now if they thought we were going to vote on this the first or second week in June, because we would already be getting past the date when we have to put legal ads in the paper and all of that.
So you've got to imagine then, I mean, and this is crystal balling, you've got to imagine, because they know their fiscal years start in July, that, you know, you know, unless by some, some really strange circumstances, everything gets super delayed and even more than we think, we'd be looking at something in the middle to end of June so that budgets could be passed or not passed before the beginning of the new fiscal year.
I, I would say that's a reasonable prediction.
Certainly, we're running out of time to get it done before that becomes a real possibility.
Right, because a month before, that would be the end of May, and we're opening schools, well, the, the current timeframe is, the pause is till May 15th, but it's not likely that that's going to be a date either, but, okay.
So to summarize your budget presentation, Jill, we don't really know what we're going to do yet.
Yeah, we're not really presenting numbers, we can't. We can't present numbers that we don't know are real, we're trying to give you an idea of, or trying to give the public an idea of what we're going to have to replace in the budget that was already presented. And when we do bring the budget back out in its full form, you know, it, it would be a better time to look at the big picture, because a lot's going to happen between now and then.
We do have a plan to make up the $568,000 that, at least to date, is the next, the most recent guidance as to what our piece of the state aid pie is.
Right, I mean, I think at this point, we, we can only solve one problem at a time, so that's, that's the problem that's before us, that's the information that we currently have, so we developed a plan to address that need. If April 30th comes by and a new need is identified, then we're going to have to continue our efforts to address that need at that time. So unfortunately, we're getting information piecemeal, so we have to make adjustments to the budget piecemeal all at the same time without knowing when the actual budget vote will be.
And then to reiterate, in case anybody has questions, the capital program that's happening as far as reconstruction in all the buildings, that is from a different, that's a different track, that has nothing to do with the current operating budget that we're talking about.
Right.
Correct, that's a great, great topic, because it is, it's a totally separate budget from the school district's annual budget, it's a budget that was developed when we voted on the capital project, and that money is totally separate and aside from the budget, it's not money that we even have, it's money that has to be borrowed in order to do that project. So it's not part of, in any way, part of the, the school district annual budget.
Right, and that's not our decision, that we legally cannot take money from that pot and use it to offset our need in our general fund.
And all school districts are in the same boat, if that makes anybody feel better.
No.
So I know, it's not a, it's not a good topic of conversation, but everyone is having the same conversation, so.
You know what, one thing that is, you know, what I'm seeing from other information from Westpud's budget survey stuff that's going around. And we're, you know, because of how responsible we have been, we are in not a terrible position, whereas other districts are really, could be in really bad shape, especially in some areas where they really rely significantly on state aid, much more than we do. And just, it's a, it's going to be tough for the, many of the six hundred and some odd school districts that are in the same boat as we are.
Okay.
No other questions, I'll stop sharing.
Yeah, and, and anybody that feels that they want to, you know, ask questions that are in the public and they don't want, they're unable to, to ask, or they don't have the means to ask tonight, we're always available. You know, we're in and out of the office as need makes it, you know, as need arises during the week, we can, we have, you know, email, voicemail, you know, available on the, on the fly for any questions or any, any concerns that the public has, they can certainly call. I don't know if I'm coming through or not, I'm kind of hearing feedback. Okay, okay.
At this point, there are no questions from the public on the budget.
Okay. All right then, more to come, obviously, when we actually have numbers. Dr. Luft, do you want to discuss your superintendent report? Or present it, I should say?
Present it, so.
You can present.
So I want to start again by taking a minute to thank all of the frontline workers, the healthcare professionals and the first responders. I know that Putnam Valley is a community full of all three. And certainly, my appreciation and appreciation of this, appreciation of the school district certainly goes out to all those individuals who are doing everything they can to keep the public and our, and our families, ourselves safe. So I wanted to certainly start that way. And then I wanted to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Margaret Podesta successfully defended her dissertation this week via Zoom, of course. So I wanted to certainly recognize her efforts and her receiving the well deserved title of Dr. Podesta. So be sure to congratulate her the next time you see her, which for all the students out there, I'm hoping is one day very soon. So we're in the process of scheduling superintendent's listening hour, which I'm considering more of a town hall event. We're looking at a date next week. It's really just an opportunity similar to a board meeting without all the board business to provide the opportunity for community members and students to ask questions. There'll be a communication going out about it in the very near future. There'll be a couple of different ways to ask a question, but we're going to try to collect questions beforehand, similar to what we do for the board meeting. So there'll be an email address set up and we'll run it similar to a board meeting in terms of having panelists and then having community members participate as attendees where they're able to ask questions that may surface. So that's something that's in the work and more information to come on that. As we've mentioned a few times, schools are now closed through May fifteenth, but our distance learning continues. We're in daily conversations with our administrators, with our teachers, our grade level leaders, our department chairs, exploring ways in which we can revise and refine our distance learning to benefit students. I still say every day, I'm extremely proud of the efforts of our teachers who are doing the best they can to provide instruction. I say it again, the instruction that's being provided virtually will never be the same as the instruction that would otherwise be taking place in the classrooms. And that's certainly very sad for our students, but is our current reality. So if, I would encourage anyone, any parents who has concerns, to first reach out to the teacher and, and then to the building, building administration if needed. People are very eager to hear both positives and negatives and we're willing to address those to the best of our ability. From what I've heard from a great deal of community members is people are very appreciative and we've received really overwhelming support for the efforts of our teachers so far. And I know that they'll continue to do a better job. And it's not just the classroom teachers, it's our related service providers that are providing teletherapy, counseling sessions and really doing whatever is needed on behalf of our students. So that work all continues at this point in time through May fifteenth. I don't know if Jeanette or Natalie want to add anything to that piece?
Sure, I can just speak a little bit. Our, you know, our teachers are every day supporting our students in various ways, making connections, responding to specific student needs and emails. Our teachers are also within their grade levels and their departments and their teams are in constant contact with each other in addition to their administrators. And there's just a lot of collaboration that's really been incredible. And I, I think our teachers are sharing resources and supporting each other more than ever before. And it's just really nice to see. Our administrators at each building have been absolutely fantastic. They are just leading their staff and making sure that their staff feels supported at all times. They are in constant communication with their staff and they're available to their teachers and staff members at all times. There are some future conversations, obviously, that we're planning for surrounding grading and graduation, end of the year events and summer planning, a lot of those things, as we all know, are dependent upon the reopening of school and knowing when the closure will end. But those are just kind of things that we have to just wait and see. Our Putnam Valley Childcare Center is open daily and that's been very successful. We're providing lunches and a safe, fun place for our children of essential workers. I speak daily with Lisa, the director there, and I was with her today. And she's just really been a great partner with us in supporting our kids, so I thank her. As Jeremy has said, there's just been continuous support of our English language learners, our students of concern, our special education teachers. Everyone has just really been going above and beyond. And I also just want to mention the, the involvement with our PTA. All three schools are really trying to keep up the PV spirit in, in many different ways. And I think that that's really helpful for not only our students, but also for our parents and for our teachers. So some of our normal PV traditions are helping to kind of keep students motivated and inspired and connected to schools. And I know Dr. and Triari started this front door decorating with the seniors and they've been shared on social media. And I think that's, it's been really helpful to see, to see our seniors, to celebrate them and to have a moment to, to really recognize their work and over, over the course of all of their years of school. At the middle school, there's the dress theme Wednesdays that are continuing. We're receiving lots of photos that are coming in of students doing their work at home and special occasions. Dr. Luft and Dr. Doherty provided Easter baskets to families over the weekend, which was really special. At the elementary school and across all the entire district, we're celebrating Earth Day tomorrow. So keep an eye out for those pictures. And I, I just want to end by saying that I really am very proud at this moment to be here in this community, working with this, these administrators and our board and, and our superintendent and Dr. Doherty's and our school leaders really have been pulling together. And I'm just extremely proud of our students and our teachers.
So I'll sort of jump in and talk about some of the related service providers and our clinicians and the work that they're doing, just so the community knows and is aware. Our speech therapists, OTs and PTs are providing services using different platforms with video conferencing. Our clinicians are seeing kids regularly, they're holding groups virtually so that they get to see each other, that our students can participate and actually look at one another and have conversations. Our, our clinicians are also we constantly reaching out to families. I do want our community to know that if you are or need our support, our clinicians are available. We want to be able to help, we are working with the Hudson Valley Food Bank. The Putnam Valley Food Bank was, was closed for a while because somebody had tested positive. So it now is being handled through the Hudson Valley Food Bank. But we are working with them, we're working with a lot of families. We know that, that this has really turned so many families who maybe never have struggled before that they're struggling now. So we want families to know that we are here, we are available to provide support and make connections for you, for you and your children. So please know that you can reach out. I'm incredibly proud, as Jeanette said, to work with our special education teachers, our clinicians, our related service providers are all had to take what they traditionally do in a school building and somehow replicate that. And I'm incredibly proud at how, how much time they've spent investigating different tools, investigating different methods of how to communicate with families and, and really being very open to communicating with families and their children in different ways. And I know that for a lot of parents who are homeworking, right, because they're working from home and have children, and some of our children have pretty profound disabilities. So it's a, it's a true challenge and I really commend our teachers for, for all that they're doing and our clinicians. So again, please know that if you are a family that needs our assistance, please reach out to us.
Thank you, thank you both. So meal service obviously is continuing and we've sent numerous messages out. We've been working closely with Aramark and we've made the decision to make all meals. So it's breakfast and lunch free for all Putnam Valley students. So there's a survey that's been sent out there for any student, regardless of whether you were paid free or reduced beforehand, that now you can sign up and come to the high school between ten and twelve and pick up free meals. And just in my, my last conversation with Sandra, who's our food service director through Aramark, it's not just simply sandwiches and salads. They've now moved into sort of prepackaged, pre-cooked meals with directions that you can stick in the oven and heat up and just to provide students with some variety of choices throughout this closure period. So I've been very impressed with, with Sandra and her team and Aramark from the get go. They had a plan in place before we even officially announced we were closing, knowing that it was a possibility. And we were able to start up, I think, day two, providing meals to students. And I don't know the, the number as of today, but I know the Wednesday before we closed, before they closed for Easter, they served three hundred and sixty meals. So that's something, just to give a sense of what's out there. And just one other food related thing. I know Feeding Westchester has a partnership with Lakeland Schools that actually my wife is involved in and it's really available for anyone who is in need. And last week, when they had their food truck from Feeding Westchester come up, she had shared the information with me and we sent it out to the community. I know that that one day, they serviced two hundred and eighty cars out of George Washington Elementary School. In fact, they took up their entire parking lot and the entire parking lot next door. And they served over twelve thousand pounds of food out of that truck. And the need is increasingly growing. And I know that their intentions are for their next delivery, which will be in May, is they're actually moving it to the JV mall just to accommodate the number of families that are in need. And Feeding Westchester, I know, has been a great partners for them. And I just wanted to sort of extend our gratitude for sharing it with our community. I guess I know for a fact there were many Putnam Valley people took advantage of it as well, Putnam Valley residents as well. So that, we'll certainly share more information when it becomes available for those families who are in need. And this is, it's unique because it's not canned foods, it's a fresh produce and it's meats. And it's the typical type of things that you would go buy at a grocery store. So they get it donated from restaurants and from grocery stores to them. And then they have a very short turnaround time to get it out to the community before any of those items expire. So that's another option out there. And I know Jeanette had spoke a little bit about the childcare service that's being provided for first responders. I did want to take a minute, had, had we still been in reality, with this, the evening would be our tenure reception and reception for our retirees, where they would be honored and we would say all these nice things about them. So while the board has a resolution before them to recommend candidates for tenure, we're still holding out hope that we may have a live meeting before the end of the school year. If that is allowed, we would certainly take advantage of that opportunity to in person recognize our tenure recipients and our retirees. But if it's looking like that opportunity is not going to present itself, we still want to have a virtual recognition, in which case we would schedule a, a board meeting in June where we would invite the tenure recipients and we would invite the retirees and their families to join the meeting as attendees. And we would invite our billing administrators and department coordinators or chairs to come on and say a few things about each of the individuals, because really they're all excellent teachers and deserve sort of that level of acknowledgement. So we don't want to hold up the process, so we're going to continue with the resolution for this evening. But we still intend on celebrating both the tenure recipients and the retirees at some point this year. And we're hoping to be able to do so in person. And then just the last piece, I know that Jeanette had mentioned it. I just wanted to recognize the Putnam Valley Fire Department. They had a donation of Easter baskets and reached out to the school district and asked us for our help in determining students in need that would benefit from those. And we were able to, Dr. Doherty, working with her colleagues, were able to quickly to get together a list. And then I got invited around, invited along to drive in the fire truck to deliver those baskets. So it was really, it gave you a great sense of Putnam Valley, it's a community. And it was certainly a, a highlight of what's been a very low, like, filled time around here. So it certainly was nice to see some kids from a distance with a mask on and some smiling faces. So I did want to just take a minute to talk about that. And that's it, thank you.
Great, terrific. Yeah, you're right, Jeremy. Ordinarily, I start this meeting every year with, this is my favorite meeting of the year because I love acknowledging the people who are just starting their careers off and are committed to Putnam Valley, as well of those people who have dedicated their careers to Putnam Valley and are moving on. And we will try to do that at another, another date, one way or another. At this time, do we have any questions from the public or like to open it up?
We have no comments.
Among the board or, and there's no questions from anybody, if you're anybody on the board or any of the.
I just want to touch on a few things that were brought up in, in those last two reports. It's hard to believe the fourth quarter started yesterday. So that's, that's an amazing thing. And to expand on this senior doors, social media stuff, I don't know if anybody saw it, I probably did, I, I just got it from a, a Google alert that Susanna Griney, she's a graduate from twenty seventeen, had an article published in the New Pulse Oracle, which is studying New Pulse's, I guess, online presence and, and magazine about our door, the door decorations. So that's very interesting, you just go to the oracle at newpulse.edu and it's there. But I thought that was wild that. But I thought that was wild that, again, Susanna Griney, 2017. She's a graduate in a third-year journalism and digital media production major, so I just want to.
And there was a really well-written article, Mr. Ferro, I saw the article, it was very, very well-written.
Those are the two things I wanted to bring up from what I saw.
Okay, so let's move on to new business, which the first several are a celebration of people. So let's begin. What order we got it? Do you all remember your normal order? We'll do your normal order?
My number, yeah.
Okay, all right then, that means, Mr. Ferro, you start us off with number one.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools, let Christian Evans be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we do the aye nay? Yeah, I think.
I think you can just say opposed, anyone opposed. You can do all in favor, then anyone opposed or anyone abstaining.
Okay, so all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Moving on to number two, congratulations, Christian.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Brandon Wish be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Congratulations to Mr. Wish. Number three. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Leanne Johnson be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Leanne Johnson. Number four.
Resolved in the recommendation of superintendent of schools, that Jamie Hannigan be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Jamie. Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation, the superintendent of schools, that Nanette Romanello be granted tenure in the area of special education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Mrs. Romanello. Romanello, sorry. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Mary Sullivan be granted tenure in the area of school psychologist at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations to Sullivan. Number seven. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Jacob Nynan be granted tenure in the area of science at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Mr. Nynan. Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Shannon Tarkington be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Ms. Tarkington. Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Angela Methen, Methen, sorry, Methens be granted tenure in the area of ENL at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Ms. Methens. Number 10.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Erin Skalopini be granted tenure in the area of elementary education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Ms. Skalopini. Number 11. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Ryan Elsasser be granted tenure in the area of physical education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Mr. Elsasser. And number 12.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools, that Matt Danko be granted tenure in the area of special education at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Mr. Danko. And before we go on to the rest of the agenda, I remember appointing each of these individuals and it doesn't seem like three and four years ago. But on the other hand, it feels like they've been here and are a part of the fabric of our school district already. So congratulations and we look forward to celebrating with you, either in real person or in virtual person. Moving on to number 13.
Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board hereby creates one full-time, 1.0 FTE, 12-month position of master mechanic two in the non-competitive jurisdictional class of the civil service, effective July 1st, 2020, to serve a minimum of 26 weeks and a maximum of 52 weeks probationary term, beginning July 1st, 2020, with terms and conditions of employment to be in accordance with the non-durational terms and conditions agreement.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 14.
Whereas the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester Counties, during and after BOCSE has proposed and presented its tentative administrative budget for the 2020-21 school year, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved to the BOCSE's tentative administrative budget for the 2020-21 school year in an amount of $9,637,111. Be hereby is approved by this board.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ah, opposed, abstain? Okay, moving on to number 15. Resolved to cast one vote for each, one vote each for three candidates for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester Counties, whose names are marked with an X on the ballot from herein above attached as document number 164/20, each term running July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Number one, Mary Kay Nielsen. Number two, Jennifer Rosen. Number three, Richard Kreps.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And Maureen, we don't need a roll call vote for that? That was fine?
Yeah, that was fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number 16.
Resolved to accept a generous donation of $75 from Karen and James Danabell for the John C. Kleinegrist Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Moving on to number 17.
Resolved on the recommendation, the superintendent of schools, to make CPSC placements at per document number 163-20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? Number 18.
Resolved to approve and authorize the district pressure to sign the closing documents as per document number 165-20 for the P-Scale Hollow Road Improvement Project.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's it for our new business. Maureen, do we have any questions on anything other than the agenda from the viewing public?
We have nothing, no.
Is there anything else from anybody on the board?
I have one thing.
Okay.
One thing, I want to acknowledge the district office and the business office tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day and I want to thank them for the work that they do behind the scenes and in front of a lot of the public that don't see it, but are integral to the success of our district. So I want to thank Maureen and all the team that's in that business district office, as well as all the support and all the buildings.
Thank you.
And Joe, you're right, it's never more than now, because they're unsung heroes normally and now they're doing it in all sorts of crazy conditions, so. Again, I share that.
I appreciate that. I think I would be remiss in not thanking everyone that's in my office. Everybody has been coming in on a staggered schedule to get everything done. And, you know, no one really knows what is going on there during this time, but they're continuing business as usual and have been so professional about doing it. No one's complained about it, no one's, not even a minute. Just all wondering what they can do to help and how, how many hours, you know, they want to put in as much time as they have to. There's nobody even questioning the reason to come, so I appreciate that from everyone.
I agree.
I think that speaks to the character of the individuals that work in Putnam Valley, because we hear that time and time again, of what can I do for you, what do you need? What, that's constantly, it's never, what they, what they need, it's always what can we do to help, to support the district as a whole. So certainly I share those sentiments. We're going to have a huge breakfast here tomorrow, but.
We have one half.
Everybody come on in.
Over.
We're all toasting you with our coffee. But it is, I think these situations do bring out the best in people and the spirit of cooperation, just the fact that Zoom has exploded and I don't feel as isolated, because we talk to people so often. And I hope everybody out there is finding those opportunities to stay connected. Someone said, a couple of weeks ago, someone said to me that we're not social distancing, we're physical distancing. Our social connections, our humanity have not gone away. So let's all remember that. Reach out if you want to talk to someone. People on the board always like to talk to people, so reach out, we're here, we're all here. Is there anything else before we adjourn for the evening?
I just wanted to quickly acknowledge that although we are completing our first month of distance learning, I think in many people, sort of that reality of the long-term nature of the situation is setting in. And I know that it's something that I've seen at home and it's something that I've spoken to colleagues about and it's something that I know other districts are going through. I just encourage everyone to sort of define the balance, to do the best you can, to look out for each other. The stress of this whole situation, we first closed for those two weeks, nobody anticipated still being closed at the end of, on April 21st or on May 15th, or with the possibility of not reopening. So I know that in some ways, I think that first month was almost a blur to many. And now with people looking at the possibility of a long-term closure and realizing that that means there's over two months left of school, double of what we've already been through. I know, I wrote it in both my community letter and my letter to our staff, like, yes, it's only been a month. I know it feels like six months, because that's the way this is, this last month has been. So I just encourage everyone to take it slow and steady, to look out for each other, to take care of each other, to look out and take care of your families. I mean, the work that's being assigned is meant to guide you through the standards and to not inundate you or stress you out or increase the level of. And to Natalie's point earlier, there's people that are here to help if we can help in any way. So I just know that the weight of this whole situation is getting heavier on individuals and it's just important to keep some perspective and to reach out for help if you need it. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody and for everybody in the Putnam Valley School community, stay safe, say well and.